The board finance and operations committee meeting of Thursday, May 29, 2025. I call this meeting of the board of finance and operations committee to order. The committee would like to welcome the audience. Viewers may watch live board committee meetings online at TCAPS.net/board. Recorded meetings may be viewed on demand at the same address. We've taken role or somebody has taken role here, I assume. The committee has set aside this time for public comment. If you wish to make public comment, please fill out a public comment card and present it to the committee's recording secretary as you speak. Identify yourself by name. Any individual may make public comment for up to three minutes. Individuals addressing the committee must take into consideration the rules of common courtesy. Public comment should not be used to make personal attacks against a school board member or district employee by name. To ensure due process and respective individual rights, the district maintains a formal process for handling complaints against individuals. A problem involving an individual or specific instance is best handled through administrative channels. These procedures are outlined in Board Policy 2504. Julie, I assume we don't have any comments?
We don't have any.
All right, since we have no public. Procedural items, the draft committee meeting minutes from May 1st, 2025. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Moving on to Rotary Charities Grant Resolution. I'm going to defer to Dr. Van Wagner, who's on Mackinac Island at this point, and reporting in.
Yeah, good morning for the Mackinac Policy Conference. So this grant is a requirement, I'm sorry, the resolution is a requirement of the grant process for Rotary Charities of Tampa City. We are applying for a $20,000 C for setting up a foundation for the school district to working to help create a 501(c)(3), and so there's a process for that, obviously. And also to have some support of a consultant to help us to set up more of that philanthropy advancement kind of office that many school districts now have across the country, now public school districts do, recognizing the issues that we have with funding and things at the state and federal level for our school district and the resources we need to be able to really help our most vulnerable students, our most at-risk students, and many of our extracurricular activities across the district. We just simply don't get the funds from the state and the federal government to be able to do what we need. And so we've been very fortunate over time to have philanthropy across our community to be able to help, but it's been somewhat rather informal in the way we collect those funds or ask or let the community know the need. So this will give us an opportunity to really create a structured system and process for people to be able to know the needs of our kids in our school district and to be able to contribute and give financially, but even of time is something that we get into this farther, we want to be able to do. And so this is kind of a first step, a first seed grant to help us to get that process going.
Go ahead, Erica.
John, the grant, how is it just, is it for a time period? Is it to fund or is it just a flat grant?
It's a one-year, it is just what that'll do is we have, we've already worked with Rotary Charities, I've had quite a few conversations with Sekira Khan about this grant, and she actually suggested and they paid for me to be able to meet with an individual named Desiree Worthington. She's currently now, she's now the retired philanthropy director for months in the hospital. And so she is now a consultant that helps entities within the grant traverses, the greater grant traverses community, to be able to set up these fundraising foundations and structures. And so this would pay for the first six months of her consulting to help us to get everything off the ground and to give some coaching and services to be able to know exactly what we need to do as far as setting up, helping to set up a 501(c)(3) with the district. We can't do it, but we can work with if we create or to do that, as well as to help our staff to set up a fundraising system, a computer system to be able to, you know, figure out who different foundations and individuals are in our community that maybe often give. And so that will help us to work that first six months of that contract.
Okay.
So John, just a couple procedural things. The amount of the request that we're making is for $20,000?
That's correct.
Okay, and this is going to be a request to Rotary Charities? There's nothing assured that we're going to get this or that full amount, correct?
Correct. This is a grant. Normally when they do C grants, they do only give $10,000, but it does say you can ask for more. I did consult and talk with Sekira about that, and so their new fiscal year starts July 1, and so in June you can put in for, it's always a month behind. So for consideration, July, June is when they would take applications for that, it's every month rolling. But because it's over $10,000, it has to go to their board versus just staff arbitrarily having discretion. But knowing the need and the conversation, Sekira thought it was appropriate that we make this ask and to take it to the board.
Okay. As far as we're concerned, we're simply moving this on to the full board for their approval to make this request. So I'm not necessarily going to read the whole resolution.
The grant application requirement is a resolution from the board of any entity that is making a request. So this is a resolution, it's, there's not really a lot of legalities to it, to be honest with you, it's one that myself and staff helped to create, but it's just a resolution that the board is in full support of making this grant request to Rotary.
Okay. John, I just, I mean, I'm fully supportive of this, and I think we're due for this to happen. And you touched on this briefly, but talking a little bit about who will benefit from this foundation, you touched on vulnerable students, at-risk students, equitable access to extracurriculars. Can you expand on what you think or we think the scope of this foundation will be?
Yeah, I think it'll grow as it goes, but in the initial, in the initial kind of work that we want to try and do and have our staff, you know, not to, you know, be overwhelmed, is one is our SSN. We know that that is something that we want to make sure we're finding every resource we can, that, you know, Katie, first and foremost, works on student's basic needs, shelter, clothing, transportation, food, like those are real key things that she works on first and foremost, but obviously that encompasses more. And I do see a vision for maybe that being our umbrella for a lot of this, if not all of it for that matter in the end. But initially it would be the SSN and request for a lot of those basic needs. The other would be for opportunities for extracurricular and out-of-school opportunities, LEED being a big one. You know, right now that we are underwriting about $60,000 a year for kids that cannot afford to participate in LEED to be able to do so, and even then Katie is also getting donations to pay that, the fee of it's reduced lunch versus free lunch kind of student opportunity. So there's some money that we're already raising there, but with our strained budgets to be able to, you know, do those kinds of things with $60,000, that's tough. And so we want to make a concerted effort, A, to try and make it to where every dollar we have, we can use for what we absolutely have to by law, but also that we have an opportunity to grow it as well. You know, we would love to be able to have our students, especially in our forest buildings, be able to have it completely paid and no question of that, but we'll see how far the philanthropy will take us. And then third is advertising across the district. We have venues, our different sports venues, our middle school fields that right now we do nothing with advertising on and promotion, and a lot of times you may have a parent that owns a business that would love to do that, but we really don't have a clear avenue for people to even know how to do that. And so those are the first three initial pots that we've decided as a team to have the office initially start with, but again, I do see it even being able to go into more opportunities and more things. We've talked about music, and we've talked even about like high school athletic supports, but we already have boosters for those, and we initially, you know, do a free job. Again, I think that we think that we can supplement in the future for those kinds of things, but right now we just want to keep it a little bit contained to be able to get our feet under the fork.
John, I assume this will be run by a board. Will it be people solely within the TCAPS community, or will you get folks also from outside that community to be part of this board?
Well, the 501(c)(3) is a little, it's kind of almost two different things. The 501(c)(3) that will, you know, what we see that is a little bit narrow maybe than some, that they will, they will do events, they will do different opportunities to be able to raise funds, but then, you know, the bylaws and those things that we want to try and work with the consultant based on her recommendations already to make it to where that can feed into the district, and the district to be able to, you know, do what they need to with those funds in these specific pods. But initially that 501(c)(3) by nature and legally is its own, and we're just kind of helping a group of community members to stand that up. We're going to be able to give them the language for their bylaws and that element, but we do want to try and work with that group to make it somewhat narrow and focused so that it doesn't creep out or venture out of the purpose and intent that we're trying to create it for. So that's, that's the work that the consultant will help us work with, with some legal folks and stuff to be able to do.
All right. Well, I think it's a worthwhile adventure here, and I certainly appreciate Rotary Charities considering this because that's sort of their mission as well. So I would move, well, I can't move, move this on to the full board?
Yep, I move that we move the grant request on to the full board.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you, John.
Would you like that under discussion, so the full board can have that?
Yeah, I would think that's probably where it goes most appropriately in case there are questions. All right, bids and services or purchases. Evan.
Good morning.
You're on.
Come on, it's infrastructure season for technology. So the first purchase I bring to you guys is for our milestone mobile infrastructure. That's for our security cameras. So we have just over 1,000 cameras throughout the district, and the infrastructure needed to keep those up and running and provide all the necessary access, both at the building sites, centrally located, and now more importantly, for the law enforcement access if so needed. We need to keep those, that infrastructure server and that licensing up to date. So with that, we are hoping to purchase the milestone mobile infrastructure from People Driven Technologies, utilizing an omnia purchasing consortium contract, so guaranteeing us the best price on that equipment. This will be purchased and installed hopefully over this summer from People Driven for a total contract award not to exceed $122,398, which includes a 10% contingency in case we needed any extra equipment for install or that, but we're not necessarily anticipating that.
Evan, is this removing the current cameras and replacing with these new cameras, or is it in addition to?
It's actually the server infrastructure kind of behind the cameras. So the cameras themselves are also in place still, and we did do, what is it, three years ago now, we did a very big upgrade where we did replace many cameras. This one's just kind of everything behind the scenes. So what's making the cameras run and the licensing, as well as those servers that help manage them.
Okay.
Okay, any questions, Ty?
I move that, do you even make a motion on each of these?
Well, since we're going to do capital expenditures, yeah, I just, I would appreciate having some motion on here in case there's any need for a record.
Okay, so I move that the finance committee approve or moves to the full board the contract award not to exceed 122,398, and this figure includes a 10% contingency.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you for indulging me on the votes.
Consent.
Consent.
Consent. Oh, I guess that's not my consent.
We'll get in the swing of this.
That's all right.
All right, Paul, Capital Projects. Nope, I'm sorry.
Evan's spending money.
Still me.
Still Evan. All right.
I'm not spending it.
Yeah, so this second purchase bringing to you is a pretty big one. It's for more of the behind the scenes, but all of our virtual infrastructure, so that'll be located at the data center. There's four virtual infrastructure servers that we are planning to replace. What that looks like as opposed to in the past, you used to have physical servers for each kind of server you needed for various equipments, whether it's cameras or print servers, other things of that nature. Now we can virtualize those, so those four virtual infrastructure servers will contain roughly 100 virtual servers, so virtual computers kind of built in on there, which is great for efficiency, and it's also important for us to keep that updated, and we are a little bit past due on needing to upgrade that and set that in place. So we're excited that we'll be moving to what's called Azure Local. Azure is one of Microsoft's kind of infrastructure cloud-based server systems. This will enable us to be truly hybrid, meaning we have some capacity to hold that storage locally in our data center and also have some of that in the cloud, which is always good for redundancy and security. So, and then it gives us the opportunity down the road to look at, you know, fully cloud-hosted infrastructure if we want to go that route. That pendulum tends to swing back and forth, whether everyone wants it in the cloud or we all want it local. So we're excited to kind of be in that hybrid model, so we have both options. This will utilize the My Deal contract, which again, gives us the best pricing for that equipment. Again, we'll be purchasing from People Driven Technology, one of our trusted vendors, to help us acquire and install that equipment. It's for a total contract not to exceed $459,780, and again, this does include a 10% contingency in the need of any additional equipment during server installation, which again, we're not necessarily anticipating the need for that.
And this comes out of bond funds?
Correct. Sorry, this comes out of the capital bond funds, our technology allocation.
I had a couple of questions. I know People Driven Technology is one of our preferred vendors, but I do notice there is no competitive bid on this. Is there no one else that offers the same service and hardware requirements?
There could be some other vendors who offer the same. I mean, that's the benefit of using those bid consortiums is we're guaranteed that is the best pricing anyone could offer us for that equipment, which is why we enjoy taking advantage of that when it's applicable, because it essentially gives us that same pricing of going out to bid and collecting all those from various vendors that we may not be familiar with, but knowing that they're not able to offer us a lower price on that equipment. And so then it gives us that flexibility to work with a vendor that has helped us kind of basically build up that infrastructure from the beginning and ensure that they're very familiar with our systems, and it gets done pretty efficiently and quickly. So pricing wise with those consortium deals, we're very confident that there's not a better price sitting out there. We're not, you know, giving an advantage to someone like a People Driven for that pricing model.
Right, and we confirm that through this consortium. What verification do we have from them that they at least have gone out and gotten competitive bidding?
I'm just sure.
I want to make sure that I can justify a half million dollars for this.
Yep. So the purchasing, so there's several, we're members, and I work with Cindy Farah in the purchasing office, and she confirms our membership in those consortiums, as well as then if the companies themselves have worked with them and have their products on there. And so those are the guarantees of joining those consortiums that they put that out. And the most common one that we see, we're not using in this case, is RMC, which is through Michigan, which is the same thing, and that's just kind of the guarantee that they've ensured the best pricing possible based on any item they've allowed into their consortium. So if the item is on here, then it's been guaranteed that that's the best price, so that's where sometimes we do go out to bid or something if they don't have the product on the consortium deal, so that we can see maybe there is a better price out there that we find.
Okay, any questions?
I move that the finance committee approves the technology department's recommendation for purchasing the virtual infrastructure servers from People Driven Technology for a total contract award not to exceed $459,780. This figure includes a 10% contingency.
Second.
Put on consent. Just one last question before we vote on this. In terms of security for these, this infrastructure, this cloud-based or wherever it may be, what do we have in place? I know the county has run into a number of issues, and so it's on the top of mind for most people. I would think that we have a fairly robust security system.
We do.
To make sure that we're not held hostage at some point down the road.
We do. So we have engaged with two, two specific companies or vendors that we're utilizing right now. Arctic Wolf is one that does overall kind of our network system scans inside and out and reports back to us. We meet weekly and contact them pretty much bi-monthly with their team, but they have a dedicated called SOC team, Security Operations Center, that is monitoring our stuff 24/7, and I can get a call at any point in the night if they anticipate something suspicious. We also have an endpoint protection, just meaning kind of like on each computer, it's called Sentinel One is the product that actually works with Arctic Wolf. They ingest those logs and kind of use that to help monitor, and so that's just in case anybody happens to get anything, click on a bad link, their computer becomes compromised, the Sentinel One software will both alert us and quarantine the device or the program in question, and so that we can mitigate that, as well as things that we've had in place for a long time, such as just our firewall. We use a Palo Alto firewall to prevent kind of unwanted network traffic, as well as just block known malicious actors from getting in and protecting that. So those are just the handful, but the big hitters for what we do to definitely, it is top of mind.
Okay, I just figured as long as it's in the paper, we might as well ask the question here. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and we will have that on consent. Now we get to talk about informational items, transportation, and Tyson.
I'll give a little bit of a summary. I asked Tyson to come today just because in the past we've had some issues with staffing, and we've had to make some decisions about cutting some busing at the high school level. We've been pretty fortunate this year, although every day is a struggle. Most of the managers and Tyson are driving on a daily basis, so I wanted to make sure you had an update as to how we're doing with staffing. It's not getting any better, it's actually getting worse. And also just a number of things that I'm not sure that the committee is aware of that he oversees. Sometimes when we talk about district vehicles, I'm not sure that everybody's aware of how many we have and how many we maintain. District vehicles like trucks and vans cannot be purchased with bond money, that's a general fund expense. So we're constantly maintaining the inventory, taking care of those, and then as needed, eliminating those from our fleet and then purchasing new ones. So he's going to be bringing, I think in September, two vehicles from the white fleet to the board, so just kind of giving you an overall update as to what we have.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I gotcha, I'll do it.
Okay, perfect, okay. So just a little personal, our personnel update. So our AM fleet, we require 44 AM bus drivers. We have 44 different buses that we put out every morning, and we have 45 licensed operators in the morning. Those 45 also include the 12 at the bottom there that are two bus mechanics that do not drive every day, three facilities people that have bus license, one of those drives every single morning, has his own route, and then we have five either directors or managers, and then two people up here at Boardman, or I call it Boardman, but anyway, up here at Glenn Loomis, that also have a bus license.
Does it include you? Are you in those numbers?
I am a director, so yes, I am one of those.
Okay.
Yes, Christine is one.
John and your two?
Yes.
Two staff, okay.
Dr. Van Wagner's a potential bus driver?
He has his license.
I appreciate that, Chris.
He was blurred out.
For the record, Christine is a lawyer, so I think she's turned him against me, recommend me not to.
You're not a driver.
Yeah, well, that's not a bad attitude.
Appreciate the process and you learning what they go through.
That's right.
Also, in the numbers that are above, we do have one licensed operator that is off long-term, long-term meaning the rest of the school year, so. Actually, it's now two that are off long-term. We had one that left us yesterday, so that just happens.
These are on disability or they're?
These are long-term personal reasons.
Okay.
So, yes.
So they may return at some point or not?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Is the, I should know this, but when you say you have 45, it doesn't include the 12. The 12 are the ones to cover for?
Those are TCTA drivers.
Yeah.
So the 12 are the ones to cover for illnesses and other things, okay. Yes. Yep, yep, so those, yes. So the, in the PM, we put out 52 buses and we have 50, I can't even see it from here, 51 TCTA drivers that do not include the 13 that are below there. Again, we have three bus mechanics in the afternoon, three facilities people. Again, we have three bus mechanics in the afternoon, three facilities people. Out of those two bus mechanics, uh three, or sorry, three bus mechanics, three of them have routes that are assigned to them. And they drive every single day. Uh we have three off for long term personal reasons. And then you can see the others, the other ones there. So our numbers do not look great. We have managers that drive every single day. Just because of this, none of this includes the normal, I am sick today and I cannot come in. So, as you can see.
And I think um some of this too is to stress the challenge. When you have Tyson and the managers and the bus mechanics driving every day, their regular work now is behind and not getting done. Which I think when we get into some of the bus inspection stuff. I'm concerned that by having bus mechanics out on the road every day, that they're not able now to prevent the great preventive maintenance services. Because they're simply not available.
And this is a lack of available manpower applying for these positions that we need. So it's not like we haven't posted them and we don't have them in the budget.
So the the posting has never came down since I've been the director for a bus driver. We've never taken the posting off.
Done incentives, we've done sign on bonuses, we've done referral bonuses for current drivers that refer somebody to come in.
Now, this is anecdotal, but it used to be that the number of people who were retirees would take a job driving bus because of the benefits package. Not so much the hourly rate.
Yes.
Is that still a competitive package at this point?
A- absolutely, yes. We, and some of those is one of the spouses will work for us. They might both have their own businesses, but they come in for the benefit package, absolutely. We have uh landscapers, excavators, uh a lot of people with their own business. And not to put it, that we used to market it as the uh the part time job with the full time benefits.
Right.
And it's still, the benefit package is outstanding.
And Dean Transportation and outsourcing, some of this is not an option at this point.
Yep. In my opinion, they're not doing any better getting staff. They're actually, I think, struggling more than we are. We've had a lot of drivers leave and come back because we have a better benefit package. And I think because the staff treats the driver so much better.
We do have two in the pipeline that are not on that list. We have two uh interviews that we're doing, so we've had two applications. So we have one tomorrow and one on Monday.
And we do provide um fully paid training, so we have trainers on site. So um you can get paid while you're in training, which is not always the case. And it's pretty expensive to get your bus license, take the test and recover that.
We have two outstanding trainers, so. Uh on the bus side of it, we have uh uh conventionals, it's seventy seven. We have four lift buses for any special needs students. We are currently not transporting wheelchair students, but we do have them in the district. They're just not requesting or requiring transportation, so we do have the buses for it. And then we do have four transit buses, the flat nose, uh normally trip buses. They are built for doing routes. They do have all the lights on them and everything like that, uh but we do not normally take them on that. Uh we are selling seven buses this summer. We had uh just because of the replacement buses that we've just received in, uh we have buses that are going out. On that note, uh the bus is on order. We have five con- conventional buses. They should be here in July of two thousand twenty six. We have one transit that should be due in February of twenty six. And then we do have the one electric bus that should be here in September of twenty five.
One of the things on here and why I put the order dates. It used to be that we could place an order in November, December and get the buses the following July. We placed this order for the conventional and transit in February of twenty five. And we're not gonna get the conventional buses till July of twenty six. It's a very long lean time. With the electric bus, we've placed that order in November of twenty four. There's actually a little bit of a a concern. Sandy and I are a little bit nervous. If we don't receive the bus by um September thirtieth, we'll have to go back to MDE and ask for an extension on the grant. Uh because the grant actually expires on September thirtieth. My guess is just knowing that there's such a delay with production that they would honor that. But currently, you have to receive the bus to be able to spend the funds and the grant currently ends September thirtieth. And our current delivery date is September. So just some things that we're watching.
We don't run any propane buses at all?
I'm sorry, what's that?
We don't run any propane buses?
Nope, they're all diesel buses.
Okay.
Except for the one electric that's on order. Uh this is the white fleet that Christine was talking about, all of our 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 pickup trucks, sander trucks, uh stuff like that. We do have one mechanic that is our lead. He's just the white fleet lead mechanic, so we go to him when it comes to replacement vehicles and stuff like that, on which vehicle should be replaced. He he's on the front line of that. Take all of his recommendations seriously. We do run uh three, which I call the big sander trucks. They require a CDL vehicle, a CDL license to drive them. And then we do have one smaller pickup truck sander that mainly does the facility site and the transportation site. We offer that up as extra work for a bus driver every year. They come in early in the morning, sand our, just our lot. We did have, uh we we have had injuries in our parking lot alone, so that's what uh stemmed that. So we we do take very good care of our, just because we have a lot of bus drivers walking around out there. So we do take specific cautions when it comes to that. We do have four uh what we call our moving box trucks, which are, they do not require a CDL license, but they are fairly large. Three of those vehicles uh have lifts on them for moving tables, chairs.
Little bit of everything that anybody requests to be moved throughout the district. There's a lot of move management in the district.
Two of those specific movers are actually bus drivers that do it in the middle of the day. Again, offered as extra work for them. And just so you can understand, we do have uh the passenger vehicles. We have uh those, the bigger, the bigger vans that I have up there is five of them. You'll see a picture of them as the one ten passenger up there on the top. So we have four of those that are ten passenger vans, legal for the school district to own and operate. And run them around mainly for sporting events. And we do have one eight passenger van um that runs out of Traverse City High School to do their programming, stuff like that. We have uh the managers and directors drive a lot of those uh four door pickups down down there at the bottom. I believe that one is a food service vehicle, right there for the director. And then we run a few uh regular four door all wheel drive vehicles, like uh our current ones are escapes. Our Mariners, which is an old escape. And then it comes to that that escape picture there. It's a fourteen with quite a few miles on it. That would be one of the vehicles possibly getting replaced soon with the the new vehicles that we order. As you can see, the back of it's rusted out and it's. It's still gone through our mechanic, still a very capable vehicle. It's just the way it is. And then a bunch of three quarter ton, one ton pickups. Every secondary school has one of those with a snowplow on it that takes care of the stuff during the middle of the day. That Elmer's does not take care of in the morning, so they can clean stuff up. Every year in the state of Michigan, it's a one day illegal passing survey that all the school districts do. It happened to be on May fourteenth this year. Christine had asked that I just pass this along. We do turn it into MDE, our findings for that one day. I did uh put a picture there. That is what the camera shows. They they uh they call them the red light runner cameras. They're on the side of the buses. We have one that points backwards and then we have one out the front window to get the the plate numbers of these vehicles. All but seven of our buses have these cameras on them. And it's just the other ones are older buses that we haven't done yet, so anyway. We had twelve in that one day, twelve illegal passers. Five were in the AM, seven were in the PM. Eleven of them were coming from the front of the bus, which would show just like that vehicle there. We could see their license plate and then we turn them into the sheriff's department. It depends on which sheriff's department we turn them into. It depends on the area you were in. It's either Benzie County, Lilluna County or Grand Travers County, or down here at the city. And only one of those vehicles was actually coming from the rear of the bus and passed it on the left hand side, which all of them were on the left hand side.
This, I think this is really important just to highlight. This this is a huge problem nationwide. I can't remember the numbers nationwide from last year, but it was astounding. On a daily basis, how many cars are illegally passing school buses with their lights on? Luckily, all of ours are from the left, meaning they're going around the bus on the non door side. You do see horrible videos of people passing on the right as kids are stopping off the bus. So this is a major problem. Luckily, we have a good collaboration with all of the sheriff's departments and they do follow through on these, which is nice. And we have the added bonus, um they actually passed a law to allow the stop arms to have cameras on them to collect this. And gave permission to law enforcement to use that data to uh give tickets. Do you remember what what the penalty is? I can't remember what it is.
I believe right now it's five hundred dollars.
So.
I mean, I'm saying wow, but would seem to be a deterrent, but apparently.
I don't, I don't think a lot of people understand the rules about buses. You know, I'm not, I'm not really sure. I remember when my students went through driver's training. I don't know that they hit on it very well. Um a lot of people don't understand when we have our hazard lights on, that you don't have to stop. It's just like any other vehicle with hazard lights, you can go around. We do hazard light stops um in areas where um it's actually been proven with data that you're better off not to control traffic. And so like Garfield Road with five lanes, you can't cross students anyway legally. So we are using those hazard lights to let students off on the right side and cars can pass around slowly. Sometimes, sometimes they stop more for the hazard lights than they do for the red lights, which is kind of confusing. But I don't know that there's a lot of education out there for drivers to understand the rules about school buses.
Well, there doesn't seem to be a lot of consistency with buses stopping, for instance, with beta stopping. Uh I'm assuming it's okay for me to go around a beta bus when it stops, but it's not.
Beta doesn't have um overhead red lights like school buses have.
Right, so.
Yeah. It can be confusing because we can do a stop depending on the type of, type of road, the speed limit and the time of year with the weather. We can stop the bus in various different positions on or off the road. We can use overhead lights, we can use hazard lights, so it is confusing. Unfortunately, yeah, well, you would think that people would be a little bit more cautious around the school bus, knowing there are children on it. And sometimes that's just not the fact. I mean, I know that we're slowing them down a little bit, but, so it's scary.
A lot of times they're hurrying. They they just wanna get by. They do not wanna be behind the school bus.
And we, our drivers do a good job after doing a stop on a major road to pull off and like let cars pass as appropriate. Sometimes it's not safe. There's not always a good shoulder to pull off on. But this just shows like how dil- diligent our drivers have to be before they actually open the door to make sure traffic is stopped around them. Well, actually, you have to open the door to get the red lights. You have to make, wait and let the students off after you know the cars have stopped.
And what happens if the students are egress the bus and then need to cross the lanes of traffic to get to their home? Do we leave that bus in that stop position that you can't pass it until those students?
Yes, they they have to be off of the road surface on the other side of the road before we can then shut our door, which turns our lights off. And then we're supposed to, if it's feasible, to move off the side of the road and let traffic by.
Okay.
But sometimes during the winter, it is not feasible because then the bus will not get back on the road. So it's, it just depends. So it's up to the driver if it's uh safe.
Yeah, neither.
So we also have the Michigan school bus inspections. Uh ours are normally done in March. They they normally give us uh maybe a week of a heads up. But it's it's normally right before spring break is when ours is. There's a Michigan, our Michigan State Police gentleman that comes out, does our bus inspections every every year. Out of our seventy eight buses that were inspected this year, uh we had two which were red tags. We had zero yellow tags. A yellow tag item would be an item, let's say I had a one um. One low beam headlight that went out during the route, I could complete the route before it had to be fixed. Now, if the headlight went completely out, the high and low beam, uh they would have to call us. We would have to get another bus out there. That would be a red tagged item. The bus cannot continue. If you have a stop arm that does not uh fully come out, that would be a red tag item. Or one of your overhead red lights goes off, red tag item. The bus cannot continue at all. Yellow tag item, one taillight out of the four that we have. Yellow tag item would have to be fixed before it went out on the road the next time. So we had zero yellow tags, two red tags. The two red tagged items we have, uh you'll see the air brake chamber that I supplied a picture of. It had a broken spring on the inside. So that chamber, if you were to put the parking brake on, the parking brake would not hold because that spring would not hold the that wheel. We had one broken spring on the inside of that chamber. And then the other one, we had a, the um had to do with brakes. You'll see the arm that comes out there. That arm can only travel two inches before it's out of adjustment. And ours traveled two and a half inches for one of our buses out of one brake chamber on one bus. That was a red tag item. That was the other one that was red tagged. As Christine mentioned, our bus mechanics, they do drive school buses, especially in the afternoon. And that's when they're not doing their regular jobs. I'm not setting, this is our fault. Specifically my fault for not to catch these. But we do have mechanics that are doing a great job.
It just does, it just does indicate that when we're pulling people off of their normal jobs, there's other things that aren't getting their, it's full attention. So it's unfortunate. We've been a school district that's been ninety nine, hundred percent um passing for a very, very long time. But there are incidents, um we actually had one a few years ago that I didn't agree with the state police inspector. We had a bus parked in the back that we planned to sell, but for some reason it was still on a list, so he considered it part of our fleet. And he red tagged it when we weren't even using it, but um we have had them in the past, very, very rare. So we do a phenomenal job taking care of our buses. For some reason, it seems like this year we've had quite a few air brake issues where mechanics are replacing a lot of those.
Yes.
I mean, it was to the point, he was telling me numbers. I'm like, are we having vandalism? What's going on? So I I don't know if it's just the same year of buses, but they fixed a lot of them. And out of, I think, eleven that had issues, you know, we only had two that we didn't catch in time.
Yes, those air brake chambers, that one specifically, we were getting four to five years out of them. Recently, we're getting two years out of that same air brake chamber. And we're not the only district. The we're working with Hoekstra to find a a better replacement. But we do have to, we have to do our jobs and inspect them more, so.
How many miles do we drive daily?
Uh daily, sir, I I I don't know why that number write off, but we do just under a million miles a year on our buses.
Which makes us one of the largest geographic districts in the state of Michigan, correct?
I think we're third largest.
Yes, I know. Benzie Central and then there's one in the UP that's bigger than us.
And Alpena.
Yeah.
Good.
Do we have uh ideas about, I mean, the busing drivers issue has been an ongoing issue for a long time. And do we have ideas or solutions for that is one question. Two, what is our responsibility from the state law around transportation? And three, what is our current policy around busing, like for example, kids who live within a quarter mile of school?
So um as it relates to recruiting, we have tried a lot. We've done, uh we've tried to package, uh sometimes it's hard. You're asking a driver to come in from five to eight or um six to nine AM and then they're gone all day because we don't have noon runs. We outsourced special ed, which used to be all of our noon runs. And then they have to come back at two to four or five. So it's, it it's hard to have a part time job that really takes up the majority of your day, so that's a struggle. But Tyson um has done a really good job of packaging jobs together. Like he said, we have movers that are bus drivers in the middle of the day. So where we can make people whole and give them an eight hour day, we're trying to package it for them instead of letting them try to figure it out on our website. There's a lot of jobs that are part time and we can work with them to say, you you know, you get insurance if you're doing an AM and PM route and getting a minimum of twenty two hours a week. So basically, anybody that's doing both AM and PM gets insurance. But it's typically four and a half. So basically, anybody that's doing both AM and PM gets insurance, but it's typically four and a half hours max. And we can help them find maybe noon duty in the middle of the day. So we, we try to go above and beyond to make sure that they're getting what they need. And then if possible, we try to package it together when we actually put it on the website that it's a posting. Um other than that, we've done, um we've done events. We have school buses parked all throughout the summer with signs on them. Um none of the events really have ever come to fruition where we're going out and having like hiring events, so we've stopped doing those. Um we have ads, um our, our best um referral process usually comes from our own employees. Um so we had referral bonuses and that, that worked for a little bit. Um I think it's getting more and more difficult. We always kind of targeted retirees. It's more and more difficult, I think, with some of the behavior challenges we have to get um some retirees to come in. It, it, the behavior is different. It's unlike anything they've seen or know how to deal with, and so that is a challenge for sure. Um as it relates to the law, we're not required to do transportation other than special ed. If you do provide transportation, there's laws in place that say you have to provide transportation for anybody living a mile and a half away from their school of residence. So um we don't go that far. We don't say you're not transported at all if you live within a mile and a half. We actually created non-transport zones around each school building and we transport everybody outside of that. As you know, it's not a good area with streetlights and sidewalks. So where, where we have um areas like around Eastern Elementary, we have a boundary that's no transport. If you live within it, it's way less than a mile and a half. You don't get transportation. However, everybody outside of that would. Um and we, we've looked at the policy quite a bit. Um actually, right now, the policy is pretty bare minimum as we updated Trune, and we're gonna take a look at that to see if we'd like to change that or add to it. Um we have full discretion, anything beyond the one and a half miles um to provide it how we'd like to, as long as it's a legal bus stop. We try to do depot stops as much as possible when, in big subdivisions, we're coming and we're stopping once. Um so a lot of times it's at the front of the subdivision and, and we get, you know, obviously, a lot of parents don't really like that. Um it's always for them a safety concern and I understand that. But for us, every stop costs time and money, even though it seems like one extra stop wouldn't, when you have as many stops as we do. If everybody got the extra stop in front of their house, we'd never get there.
Well, and, and there's safety concerns for having our mechanics drive.
Yes.
So will this policy come to review to us this year?
Um it's something on our radar to look at. Um when we adopted policies, we went with the bare minimum. Uh for one reason, for, one, he's driving every day to try to take time to sit down and review that and create something wasn't our priority at the time. So we want to take a look at it, see if we have any recommendations for changes. It would be something that we would bring to the board because we will get some kickback if we start making longer walks or longer rides. Um we try really hard not to have very long rides, sometimes it's unavoidable. I mean, it, it never fails, you have a student at the end of the peninsula that goes to um East Middle School. And it, you know, it simply isn't feasible to not have them on quite a long time. So, you know, we can take a look at that and make some recommendations. Um this year, um I, I think you're going to bid this year, where they're going to take a look at all of the routes and redoing them to get some efficiencies. Um our challenge always is, you know, we require uh students or parents to sign up for transportation to get a ride. And it just never fails, people sign up and don't ride. So we have like a hundred and eighteen um high school kids assigned to a route and forty ride every day. And it's, it's a challenge because you have to plan for them. And then the driver has to figure out who's actually on, which it helps with our new uh routing software and the tablets that they have. They can actually say which stops are not on and it'll reroute for them. In the past, it was the driver trying to figure out how to get to that stop and skip this stop. So it's, it's a little bit more um planned and safer in my mind, but it's a challenge. I'd like to get to a point where um we have um elementary students scan on and off. So we know when they're on the bus, we know right away if they're on the right bus or the wrong bus. We know when they get off. So many times, um we'll have a parent call that they haven't got off at the stop yet. And we're trying to locate the student and we're calling the bus driver, do you have the student on? Uh they're not on the right bus, call the other buses at that school, are they on that bus? Are they still at the school? Well, now if they scan, we know exactly where they are. We know when they get off too. And there's an app so parents can look that up. We're only doing an elementary and I would really like to push to go beyond that to middle school and high school. Middle schoolers are the worst, the first day of school, always get on the wrong list. They, they get on the bus they had last year, or they get on the bus number, not the route number. Um I'd like to get to a point where we're doing the scan on, scan off district wide. It would require students to wear their IDs, so that's a bigger conversation. But I think it could provide a lot of efficiencies. And more s- more safe and secure where you know where students are. You know, and it never fails the first day of school, middle school, nine, times out of ten, it's, it's middle school. My student's not home, we don't know where they are, and there's so many routes out of W- West Middle School and East Middle School. Now you're just randomly calling buses trying to find the student. It uh, it takes a lot of time and energy and it bogs down the radios and the phones quite a bit when you actually have a serious issue.
It makes the driver's job, will make the driver's job easier, which then might be a better sell to get them to sign up.
Yeah. And it's, if you can see the student's name and picture and correlate them to a bus stop, you know they're getting off at the right bus stop. Or you know they're on the right bus before, wrong bus before you even leave the school. So it, it does help us track students better, so you know, we always used to say, your student's not lost, they're just displaced for the moment. And we always find them on the wrong.
We just don't know where they are.
On the wrong bus, they're still at the school. Um but that definitely would be something I would like to move forward with. Which could be a policy change, it would be up to, I haven't talked to Don, Dr. Van Wagner much about that, but I went to a recent conference um in Texas on safety and security. And most of the districts were really, really big districts because it's a national conference. So I'm talking to districts that have two hundred and sixty thousand students and, you know, it, it was kind of, they're like, well, what do you mean you don't already do that? It, it was, you know, it's very different. We, we feel here, Patrick and I went, the direct director of safety and security, and we've always kind of felt like the big fish in a little pond here. Well, there, we, you know, no big fish. I mean, people are doing things beyond what we have thought about. And we'd like to kind of take some of those uh thoughts and ideas and bring them back to our district to improve our safety and security.
All right, anything else?
Um not for transportation. Thank you, Tyson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, just a quick question, Megs, I mean, with school of choice in this mile and a half radius that you will bus or not bus from? I just said, as fact, is it students and their designated school that a mile and a half, or?
So um it is their school of residence. So if you live by Eastern but go to Central Grade, you can only get on a bus to Central Grade if you get to a Central Grade bus stop.
Okay.
Um and the mile and a half doesn't pertain if you're not going to your school of residence. So if you're open and roll or school's a choice, the mile and a half doesn't pertain anyway. And we really don't even have to provide transportation, but we do. We actually, you know, it, we've done a lot of extra to accommodate childcare. Um every student can have two bus stops in our district. And they can be open or roll schools of choice or going to their school of residence with two different stops. So they could have two different bus assignments. Um and you never know which day they're going to what. And you, it's really hard to even schedule that because, especially with older students, middle school and high school. It, um they don't always have a set schedule. Um so it's a challenge. We offer a lot, which does put a lot of pressure on the system.
Yeah. Thank you, Tyson.
Thank you.
Appreciate the update. Twing Capital Projects. Good morning.
Good morning. So the uh first phase of the train performance management contract is continuing. The lighting upgrades, uh the water management, uh replacement of fixtures, plumbing fixtures and that continues on. The building envelope portion of that is, we're moving into the summer uh rather quickly. And when the boilers were turned off, they started replacing boilers uh in the components, in the HVAC systems. Now, the one you're looking at on the screen there is the one in our offices at facilities. Rather small application, replaced by an even smaller uh boiler, more high efficient. However, at West Middle School, it was a little more involved. Um team elders came out on site, they had to hoist the forklift to the other side of the building.
I think we were there on a tour that day.
Yeah.
That West Middle one, with the crane was over the, yeah, you could see them working away.
Those were, those were the existing boilers that were removed.
Wow. It was.
Central grade.
It was quite an ordeal.
Say central grade.
So they busted a hole in the side to get it out and then they had a crane. First, we had to trim trees in the back so it could fit, then they had a crane lift it up and over the building towards the parking lot.
So there they're taking the uh old equipment out, wasting the old boilers across. And those are the new ones. We replaced two old large boilers uh in the same footprint, we put four brand-new ones. Those Cleverbrooks, Clearfire, yeah, okay. So higher efficiency, um and a lot of redundancy.
Well, and I think too, the, the concept of, we've always struggled with shoulder seasons. So you saw how big those other boilers were. It used to be a long time ago, we would fire up both of them as soon as we started boilers. And that's a lot of waste of heating water that's just not putting out into the building because it's not calling for it. So we got to a point after working with um synergistic energy management where we were starting the shoulder season with one boiler, because it was enough to help uh take the edge off in the shoulder season. Then we would turn on the second one, when it got really bad, maybe January, when we're in the negative degrees. We actually haven't run two in a couple of years, we haven't needed it. But when you look at these, much smaller, and you can.
Cycle them.
You can cycle them. So you can bring one up in the shoulder season where you don't really need a whole lot and you're not heating all of that water.
Okay, over at uh Travers Heights, um I took these pictures um Tuesday morning. Uh and they've already got the joists up and they're getting ready for roof deck and that, so they're moving along pretty quickly over there. This is the classroom addition. On another angle, these are the three classrooms we're adding. Now at the front of the building, uh where the cafeteria is being expanded, this is a, this is a little tunnel walkway that um we created to keep the students out of the roadway and out of the construction area. And um it's become quite an adventure for them over there.
I bet it has.
I bet they love walking by the construction. They, we needed to get a head start on the cafeteria addition because that absolutely has to be up and running for school in September. If the classrooms lag a little bit, we can make it work and move in a month or so late. But this one absolutely has to be done, so we let them get a head start on that.
So they're off and running, uh putting some foundations, they're going in. Okay, out at West Senior High, um this is uh the circulation project out there. And this is what we're uh working towards at the end of this summer, having this loop uh completed. I don't know how I can show it to you better. We're gonna be down to one entryway directly across from Hurtner Road. Uh we're working with the county on the lights, uh timing those out, uh and creating a single uh stoplight at that intersection. The bus loop comes in uh to the right, the traffic all goes to the right at the end of this and loops around uh the school in the opposite direction that it does now. And that, the mid, the darkened areas uh is the work that's anticipated to be completed uh by the end of the summer.
Yeah.
Hopefully by the end of the summer.
Yeah, they, they said October, but, so this um, the focus here with this plan is to bring the parking up to the building so you don't have people crossing traffic to get to the building and bringing the outside travel, the traveling out to the outside. So hopefully, less incidents. We've had several ish, incidents, one very recently where somebody got hit by a car.
This, this will be the bus entrance and traffic entrance, the bus loop is here. It's separate from the rest of the traffic. Then the direction is around and here, and then the parent drop-off actually comes past and in and around this loop and then back out and around. And there's two way, two lanes of traffic all the way around there, so there's bypass on the outside uh in lines. So you, you don't have to sit in line, you can bypass the line.
We did keep it one way. Um there were so many pinch points and stop signs if we tried to do two-way that it felt like a lot of congestion. So we kept it one way, but we turned it around so it's actually the correct one way. I don't, I don't know if you guys are familiar, but it originally was built this way to go this way, one way. And then they brought a school bus in and realized kids had to cross in front of the bus to get off, and so we changed the way the traffic goes.
And on the right side of the building, uh is eventually where the, the lane of traffic is? Is it gonna be moved to the X T? Okay.
That's next summer.
Okay, that's what I thought. I thought it was in phases, but I, I just, just needed to remember.
Two summers.
So this is phase one.
Okay.
The dark blue lane here will be a temporary lane uh for two-way traffic this summer. And then I'll get to another drawing that shows that. The pink area here is the area of construction this summer. Uh this is our lay-down area for contractors. We've already got a construction trailer on site there um to manage the, the project from Miller Davis has their trailer there. This is the uh summer uh traffic flow plan. The uh blue arrows are obviously the in uh and out with the pink. Um and it's two-way traffic. We've got signage coming, uh I think you asked them to put some up right away here.
Yeah.
So um.
So in, in the middle of construction, it'll be two-way because we've blocked off half of the. And we're using the uh traffic light on the current out to do an in, in and out, and we're working with the county to time that light. And then eventually that light will be removed when we have the main entrance done, so we won't have the two lights so close together.
Yeah, there's, there's gonna be signage all along, uh talking about the two-way traffic. We're gonna stripe the pavement and that, uh so it's, it's more obvious. And Lot C will be open uh for the summer, uh so you can get all the way around there and back out. Hurtner, or the Cedar Run Road uh entrance and exit will be open all, all summer also.
Except for June twelfth and thirteenth. So uh, so Hurt, Cedar Run will be open, but we're closing the access to North Long, just the twelfth and thirteenth of June. And they're making signs right now, so we're warning people ahead of time because they need time to create the temporary road to get in and out.
They'll make the, the twelfth and thirteenth will make the connection. They should be out there prepping that shortly, getting it all ready. So that on those two days, alls they need to do is make the connections. And then this is phase two uh next summer, till summer twenty-six. And that, that's the rest of the uh, rest of the areas.
So we have, um I don't know if you can see it well because it's highlighted in green, but maybe you can get up Pollen Point. So the road has come out to the outside, but we added a little bus loop in front of the athletic area to kind of separate um staging for buses for trips.
Oh, all right. So traffic, traffic will, this will be the only entrance, the one main entrance. And the, the loop road is now on the outside of the parking areas.
So smart.
And here's the, here's the bus loop up at Athletics. The um, the roundabout here is actually going away. It's gonna be a T intersection when it's finished with stop signs. And then obviously, the rest of the way around.
It'll be a major improvement. We'll, we'll have to deal with construction for two years, but.
All right, anything else on Capitol?
One more thing. So a couple of months ago, we received a letter uh from the state of Michigan. And it was, it was addressed to a dear staff of municipalities and public schools. So uh and, and I think the easiest way to describe this is just to read the first paragraph. It says, you were receiving this letter because all are part of your municipal separate storm sewer system, MS four, has been identified by the Michigan Department of Environmental Great Lakes and Energy as being located within a regulated area with a population of fifty thousand or more, based on the uh current census. So uh we've uh contracted with a uh, a firm that's done a lot of work with other uh municipalities and school districts to go around and do some mapping for us of our uh stormwater systems. Um we're using uh Arch Environmental Group. This comes as uh an unfunded federally mandated, state enforced program with the goal of reducing discharge of pollutants to uh surface waters in the state. And so, and it's, it talks about a separate drainage system for stormwater only. So on a lot of our sites, we've got um uh twenty-six uh sites, uh properties. Uh nineteen of them are within the boundaries of the regulated areas. On this map, the red outline is the school district, T caps. The pink areas are the regulated areas. And that's, so nineteen of our, our properties fall within those regulated areas. However, we've investigated, we did this last week. I spent a lot of time with uh Arch Environmental, going around to the sites and looking. Uh there's only two sites that I can think of right now that were, were actually connected to uh, or maybe connected to the storm system. One is Thoroughly Field and the other is um potentially West Middle uh Montessori. The rest of the sites, not even Central Grade, could we find a connection uh to the city storm system? So.
But we do have separated storm and sanitary, right?
We do have separated storm and sanitary, but most of our storm system is contained within the site. Filtration. Not discharging from a pipe somewhere. And that's, that's the specific language in this program is that it's being discharged. Um into, so I'm hoping that through this investigation and through our, our work here with the, the consultant, that we can uh. Exempt most of our sites uh from this. So what they require is uh, you know, as a regulated. They call it as a regulated MS four, we're required to obtain. Uh coverage under a national pollutant discharge elimination system permit, which is issued by legal. So there's minimum control measures. We have to develop a stormwater management plan. Which includes public participation and we've been talking with the city and the colony. Uh and I've been talking with other school districts about how they do this. Uh we'll probably have to develop some kind of webpage that we manage and maintain uh on the schools um web.
Have you been in conversation with Andy Smiths at all?
Yep, Andy's been in my office a couple of times.
Yeah, he's got some good ideas on stormwater management because the city's also behind the ball on this.
And so there's a public education program, so with this public participation, we're probably looking at partnering with the city to develop something. In common that we can talk about. Uh the, the things listed here on uh this are, are just minimum uh control measures that we have to. Uh look at, we have to put in a, like I said, the stormwater management plan itself. And then once we've got that all put together, uh we have to submit for a, a permit for the uh sites that. Fall under the regulations. And that, and the deadline for that is uh August twenty nine this summer. Really, you have to submit for a permit. Doesn't mean we have to have it by then, but.
And we're not bound by any impervious service requirements or other stormwater. I'm surprised by central grade, to be honest, um. But, and I think as we redo it, thinking towards that of where the water goes during storms. Cause it can't all go. On the limited green of central.
There's, well, there's um underground retention there. That it goes into and there's several uh large bottomless. Inverted, I forget what to call.
Sisterns?
Sisterns like that. Same with Willow Hill. There's, there are no obvious connections to uh city storms uh anywhere except at, like I said, Thoroughby Field. I know that one's connected. Cause when we did, redid the turf there, we did an underground retention system. That the overflow for was connected to the city storm. And we had to go back and put a backflow presenter in because the city storm was backfilling into our retention system and filling it up.
And I'm actually shocked about Montessori, cause they have a retention pond.
And that's the issue is, it's, the definition in there is the discharge, you know, so. That system filters on down from West Middle School into that pond, and then the overflow from the pond. Goes through a pipe and then pipe discharges. And that's what we were gonna have to manage is that discharge, so.
Because it goes under Frankie Road to the Meyer side of the road.
If it was all retained on the site and didn't go anywhere, that's one thing. But because it has the potential to discharge somewhere else through that.
Way above the ground.
You know, for the city schools, Oak Park, um central grade, and the, the city had a saw grant. That they got an analysis of everything except the downtown and where the discharge for storm was going. And I know they've got all those records, cause I've seen them, but. The recommendation from the grant and the analysis was that they needed to spend a million dollars a year. For the foreseeable future, just to bring their stormwater system up to speed, so. It's a problem that everybody's dealing with now, so. You're not the lone stranger in this one.
No, and this is, this isn't anything new to the state. It's just new to us because the population exceeded fifty thousand in the last census. And that was the trigger for it.
Alright, um are we done with capital projects?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sustainability Committee, if Dr. Dan Rechner hasn't disappeared on this.
So we uh, and yeah, we were a little light attended this month, but um we did, we are working on, there's a. Something called the Michigan Green Schools Initiative, um and it's a state program. Um I believe run out of uh DEQ, uh that um there's three different levels of. Of uh commitment to the green schools initiative. We do have some schools already. I wanna say about four or five that are, have gone through that process. Uh Montessori is actually working on their second level now. Um but uh what we're trying to do is look at uh what it would take uh starting um. Next uh late fall and the winter is the application due date, I believe next March. Uh to have all of our schools look at an application for uh the, at least the initial uh level of green schools. Um so we're working, when we'll be working through the summer, putting together a uh. A somewhat of a, a form and an opportunity to figure out how to do an assessment. Of what things we have in place of the uh opportunities that you do have to choose from. Uh there are multiple things you can do and, and you have just a select few of those that you have to do to reach the first level. Um so that's uh, that was a big bulk of our conversation um going in. We did talk a little bit about. Uh board policies and how that works with uh e- energy efficiency and some of those kind of things, so. That's something that um we talked a little bit about and how our policy process works of. Creating policy and that, you know, that's reviewed by legal and the county generally brings that to committee and to. Uh the board, and so we talked a little bit about what that process looks like. Um and then uh that was, oh yeah, so we'll be meeting again this uh next month to uh talk more about green schools initiative and. That work and uh continue to move that forward.
Alright, thanks John.
I got one little question. John, did the, the team working on our climate action plan make any progress?
They've been meeting, um but at this point yet, they don't, there's not really a, you know, any kind of recommendation. They're. So you know, trying to look at what are components, what are some of those beginning level things, but that subcommittee has met um twice. Um and uh we're planning as well to, to keep meeting until they kind of get to. What those thoughts are and bring that to the group and, you know, have some debate of, you know, what that looks like. Uh but I think that, you know, the green schools was one of the key things that they thought, you know, would be in that, so. Um no, nothing real formal on that, but they, they acknowledge that they are meeting and we do have. Uh two of our, our facilities director, um one of our facilities directors, um our managers rather. And uh Tom Freyas, our food service director, are a part of those conversations with them.
And I don't know if you two are familiar, but we're basing this action plan on Interlock and Center for the Arts Climate Action. Plan and, and it's, if you haven't seen it, so maybe you can share it out with the board, John, but it's.
Alright, thank you. Um finance, Christine.
Budget update. So uh we will be bringing on June ninth the. Uh final amendment to the twenty four, twenty five school year and then the original budget for the twenty five, twenty six. For the final amendment, uh we are definitely looking much better than we had originally predicted, so we had planned to draw up to three million dollars from fund balance this school year. Um and right now it's looking a little bit closer to half of that, so about one point five. Um there's a lot of variances within our budget. I think we have between fifteen thousand and twenty thousand account codes. Now, some of this is a little bit deceiving because we do have schools that get carryover. So we'll close out the year that they didn't spend it, and then next year we'll have to add it back as part of the budget, so it's a little bit deceiving from that front, so there's. Few hundred thousand dollars that we'll have to add back to next year's budget, because we have to close out the year, but we allow them to carry that over to the next year. In some scenarios it's not. A lot of, a lot of departments can't carry over, but we let the sites carry over any excess FTE.
Yeah, that's good. I think in January, I'm looking at the, the first amendment we did, and that was around two million drawing from fund balance, so less, five hundred thousand less. It's great.
Yep, and uh, you know, I, if, if I were to predict, I think it'll end even better than that. Um we did receive for a couple of different projects, some grants that were unexpected that we had planned to use general funds, so obviously that helped the bottom line. For next year's budget, um as you know, we don't know what our budget is. We've gotten two and, two and. A quarter budgets, uh the governor, state and senate, and then just part of the house as it relates to a couple of sections. Which really doesn't help much, because it's good to know what they're thinking about foundation and. The mental health and school safety, but if none of the other categoricals identified, you, you might assume there's zero, which is really bad for our bottom line. I know they're not going to be, but they didn't really put out a full budget, so it's not very helpful. Uh typical, typically what we do if we don't have all of the information or know our budget exactly, we kind of look at the three. Uh proposals and kind of go with middle of the road, if you will, um for predicting our budget, so. This year more than ever, it's very unknown. Um I'm not even sure that we'll have our budget by September. I think John's a little bit more hopeful. Um but we do have to uh adopt a budget before July one, so our original budget is, is more of a um educated guess than ever before. Um we went with a governor's proposal uh for the foundation, three ninety two is an increase. We are predicting an increase of students about twenty five. Um this is um. A little bit at the elementary uh level, but also quite a bit with the uh CLC programs, so some of the online learning. We're expecting an increase of students, which is great. We've pretty much stabilized the last couple of years, plus or minus, I think, ten students. Um but now we, we might be seeing a different trend where we're on a little bit of an upswing. Um we currently are aware of a, a reduction in our at risk, which is thirty one A of about a million dollars. I know um John's been advocating. With legislators to change some of that language, because a lot of this is a result of not getting some free and reduced forms due to the state offering all free meals. Um so there's a recognition there, and I know um John drafted some language as a suggestion. To try to make sure that we're held harmless, if you will, because we're not getting those forms, and we are focused now on. Pushing those forms and, and trying to make sure that we're getting a form back from every parent. Um right now, we're assuming the other categoricals stay the same. Um there's a lot of categoricals that have different um. Focuses, um we've gotten some money from the ISD, we've gotten a couple of allocations that. I think they had carryover, so they're able to give us an, an allocation. Um and then as it relates to um our typical variance, we typically see about one point five million in variance, so we just put that right in here. So that you can see the true bottom line. With all that being said, we are predicting a draw from fund balance of about two million. Again, that's with not a lot of information, so my hope is that it only gets better than that as we get our information.
One quick note, I would like to give you how volatile this is. Um a- about seven o'clock last night here on the island, the speaker of the house announces his budget will have a twelve thousand dollar foundation. Uh but, but basically wiping out almost all categoricals. Um so, which, yeah, I, I will tell you, I was with. Uh many Republican House members that were blindsided and had no idea he was making that announcement. Um so, eh, uh who knows where this is gonna go. I can tell you, I, I, I mean, I was with the, the budget chair. At one o'clock yesterday afternoon, I'm convinced he did it. So, um it, it wild west, I, I'm not sure how this is gonna go, but. We're trying to make a budget that we have to by July one by law, based off that kind of volatility and things that are out there that are. Are seriously being, being put.
That's almost two thousand dollars more per pupil than what.
And it, the, the premise behind that's not bad. We've always advocated, put it in the foundation, not the categorical, cause the categoricals have restrictions. It would, we'd have to do some math to see if we're ahead or not, as it relates to what we got total in categoricals, but. The premise behind that is something I would support going forward. I don't, I don't know that it would ever pass, but.
No, it's the politics behind that that make me nervous.
Yeah, it is, and it makes me really nervous too, like I, I, at one o'clock yesterday, I was feeling, okay, there's maybe a chance at this, and then. Like I said, eh, I'm sitting with John Rods and we're sitting eating pizza going, I don't know what to say. You know, it's, it's wild.
Not unlike Washington.
No.
Alright, anything else on finance?
Um no, not on budget update.
Uh upcoming district, anything you wanna highlight?
On the upcoming district purchases? Um not necessarily, I just like to bring attention to it. Um we, um the top section obviously is. Are, are things that are uh coming now or in the next month or two. We are still waiting for more details on some of the remedies we need to do on the bridge at Traverse City High School. I know. Paul's called and emailed and bugged and begged, but I know they're also busy, the services that we're requesting.
Yeah, they're supposed to be getting me uh documents to put out the bid here. Next week.
Um like I said, two district vehicles Tyson's gonna purchase as um part of our ongoing uh program. Um I know there's gonna be some facilities equipment, custodial equipment that comes out of the facilities bond allocation. Um we will be going out for bids shortly for some renovations at this building to prepare for central grade coming. To the building, we need to do some modifications to the kitchen especially, uh to house that many students and feed that many students. Um and a couple other things, and then we're, we'll be doing minor modifications to the Central High School F Wing to fit. Uh the rest of the administration staff that's not going to Saban. Um so we're working on that. Um we'll have to do an upgrade to the gym here. Um it, you know, it hasn't been used in a while, so it hasn't been sa- sanded down. Um so we'll do a proper sand down of the gym floor uh before central grade gets here.
Well, we still have a year or so before we, maybe two before they occupy.
Just a year. So we, um we would like to be completely out of here in May, so that we have time to start staging, um moving them over.
May of twenty six.
Um elevator upgrades, this one, um some new requirements uh have come to light. Um Paul's working. Um with one of our facility managers, we've done upgrades to two elevators that really just required a, a phone line. Um but we do have two elevators that will need to be replaced in the next few years, and I actually think they're two fifty apiece, so. I'm not sure if we'll do it at the same time or separately. Um which are the two that need to be replaced? I think you said West Senior High.
I think that's one of them, West and Central. High school, high school, grade school, correct, yeah, okay.
Um model filling stations, it's kind of like what um Paul just shared about MS four, we have new. Um requirements um for uh water within buildings and lead testing. At some point, we'll know all of the rules with that, they, they kind of keep changing. But at some point, we'll be needing to do some big purchases of those filling stations that meet the new code. Um so that's kind of out in limbo right now, um and then some of the other things we've already talked about.
I just, I mean, I, I've asked for this before the last meeting, and I'm gonna ask for it again, but if we can just have an up to date summary. Of the, all the things we've approved to date for twenty twenty four bond. Um what we've provided guidance on, including, like I see music renovations, but it says two million, but we've okayed fifteen million, I believe.
Yeah, the two million is just for West Middle School.
Yeah, I see that, but I mean, just like, I just big picture of the hundred eighty million, just for.
So it's in my slideshow for the ninth, for the update on the strategic plan.
Thank you.
The red, yellow, green, right, like where we're at.
I mean, that's great too, but it would be nice, just on one page.
It lists all of the things that the board has approved, so out of a hundred and ninety million between what we had left in eighteen and. Um the new authorization, I think the board has already approved like hundred and seventy six that, million dollars, so there's not.
That's my question, so we've approved one seventy six so far.
Um I'll have it on the slide on the ninth, that's what's coming to mind. Um I just worked on it yesterday. But it will be accurate on the ninth in that, in that show, and slideshow, and I have listed all of the projects. Um that have been approved with those dollar amounts, so you'll see that on the ninth.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Do you all have any public comment out there? I see head shaking, no. Um alright, the next board finance and operations committee meeting will be Thursday, July. July tenth? We're skipping the month of June there.
Well, it technically, this is the June one, kind of, sorta.
Okay, that's fine.
The dates don't always line up now the way that we schedule them, but obviously with the Fourth of July week, we don't have any meetings that week, so.
Alright, so the next one's July tenth, and I have never watched a jury. All in favor, say aye. We are adjourned.